We're going to start. We're at 6:30. I would welcome those people if they like. We have better seats and it's not going to cost you any money extra. My name is Scott Kizner. I'm the superintendent of Stafford County Public Schools. I do want to welcome parents. I recognize you're taking time out of your schedule, but this is a busy, I mean, important process and the school board is here to listen to everybody's comments as they deliberate to a final decision that will take place on March 26. I would like to introduce Matt Townsend, who's our supervisor of planning and GIS, and he's going to briefly walk you through the two plans and then we will turn it over to Ms. Healy, who will walk you through the process for tonight.
As Dr. Kizner stated, my name is Matt Townsend. I'm the supervisor of GIS and planning for Stafford County Public Schools. I'm going to briefly review the two plans that the school board has voted to bring forward to the community for the purposes of receiving feedback via public hearing tonight. I'll start off the meeting reviewing the timeline to discuss where we have been and where we are headed, and then I will briefly review the two plans, Plans E2-1 and E2-2, before turning it over to the public hearing component of tonight's meeting. Where we have been, so far we've had one community meeting where the consultants described the current state of our elementary schools and the need to redistrict. There have been three town hall meetings where the consultants brought the plans, the then-proposed plans for review to the community, followed by a question and answer period. There have been a total of six school board work sessions where the school board met to discuss and deliberate matters regarding the redistricting. And our first public hearing was last night at Stafford, or North Stafford High School, where the school board received feedback from the community. Where we're going, we have tonight's public hearing, followed by a scheduled school board work session for next Wednesday, March 21st, or next Thursday, March 21st, at 6:00 PM, and that will be located in Room 14 of the Professional Development Center located at 37 Stafford Avenue in the central office complex. At the March 26th school board meeting, the school board is scheduled to approve a boundary plan to take effect for the 2019-2020 school year. Plan E2-1. I'm going to quickly review Plan E2-1, focusing on the areas that are being proposed for a different elementary school assignment than their current. In the lobby, there are large format maps hung for your review, as well as the large format files posted online, allowing the viewers to zoom in and get more detail for a specific area. Here we have the northern areas of Plan E2-1. The shading represents the proposed boundary plan for every school. The red line represents the current attendance area lines for the schools, and the black and red flag represents the specific school points. We're going to work our way across the map from east to west, beginning with Rock Hill, and I'm going to be looking down, reading my notes, so I apologize in advance for that. Rock Hill alleviates Brent by receiving neighborhoods such as Millbrook, Hidden Lake, Crown Manor, Roseville Plantation, and County Wood Estates. And again, this is not an exhaustive review, this is just an overview of every plan. So those are located in those areas. Garrisonville receives Arbor Glen and Marshall Estates from Winding Creek, located here. Brent receives part of Rolling Meadows and homes along Mountain View Road from Winding Barrett relieves Park Ridge Elementary School along the 610 corridor, receiving subdivisions such as Meadowwood Village, Elizabeth Park, and Cabin Creekwood. Embry Mill gains, or Park Ridge gains Embry Mill, located here. Winding Creek gains Courthouse Square and part of Stafford Oaks. Burns receives Carriage Point, Villages of Acquahia, and Forest and Woods. Hampton Oaks receives an additional piece of the Hampton Oaks neighborhood and Acquahia Moncur receives Foxwood Village, Woodstream, Potomac Hills, Port Acquahia, Hills of Acquahia, Acquahia Town Center, Lakewood Apartments, Holly Mead, Arbor Grove Apartments, Spring Hill Town Houses, and Quartz at Stafford, and that's located in this area here. Wide Water and Stafford Elementary Schools do not gain areas under this plan. Plan E2-1's southern areas, for this one, we will work our way from east to west, beginning with Grafton. Grafton gains areas along Brook Road, south of the Andrew Chapel intersection, including Bexley Manor and Mount Hope Estates, as well as Potomac Run Farm, this area. Ferry Farm gains Kendall Wood East and Kendall Wood Estates, Little Falls Village, Holly Ridge, Brookfield and Brookfield Hills, and Towering Oak Estates. Conway gains Clearview Colonial Heights, Ingleside, Belmont Hills, Old Forge, JP Simpson, and Rappahannock Landing. Falmouth gains Sunnyside, located right there, as well as the villages at England Run, England Run, and England Run Town Houses. Rocky Run gains the townhomes of England Run North and England Run Apartments, located there and there. And lastly, Hartwood gains England Run North. Here we have the data table for Plan E2-1. This is part of the packet that's been posted on the redistricting website, and will also be posted as part of the public hearing presentations. For Plan E2-2, I'm going to focus on areas where this plan differs from Plans, from Plan E2-1. The pink shaded area represents areas proposed to attend Hampton Oaks Elementary School under Plan E2-1, E2-2, and the yellow represents areas proposed for Moncur Elementary School under Plan E2-2 that were proposed for Hampton Oaks under Plan E2-1. Specifically, we have Potomac Hills, Port Acquahia, Woodstream, Lakewood Apartments, Holly Mead, Quartz at Stafford, Acquahia Town Center Apartments, Spring Hill Town Houses, and Arbor Grove Apartments, being proposed for Hampton Oaks under Plan E2-2. And then we have Acquahia Harbor being proposed to attend Moncur under Plan E2-2. Here's a look at the northern part of the county under Plan E2-2. Everything is the same except for what we've previously discussed on the last slide. And the southern part of the county under Plan E2-2. Again, the same as Plan E2-1. Here's the data table associated with Plan E2-2. Again, this has been posted online as part of the E2-2 packet and will be posted as part of the public hearing presentations as well. And with that, the brief overview is complete. I will turn it over to Sheree as we transition to the public hearing section. Thank you very much.
My name is Sheree Johnson. I'm the Director of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement, and right now, I would like to take a minute to recognize our school board members. School board members, if you could kindly wave as you're making your way onto the stage, come on in. So first, we have Ms. Patricia Healy, our school board chair, and we have Ms. Pamela Young, we have our vice chair, Dr. Sarah Chase, and up front here, we have Ms. Jamie Decatur, and we have Ms. Holly Hazard, and of course, we have our superintendent, Dr. Scott Kizner, which you heard from. Also, we have our Conway Elementary Principal, Mr. J.R. Rabel. JR, if you could wave, yeah? And we have our Principal of Stafford High School, Mr. Joe Lewis, in the back there. Did I miss anyone else here? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, so now we are going to move to the public comments portion of the meeting. If you are interested in speaking, if you could come forward to the microphones on either side, this evening, we're going to alternate between questions. When you came in this evening, you probably filled out a note card that had your name and address on it. When you come up to the front, we have a communications representative up front. Please give your note card to the communication representative, and then we will give those cards to our clerk of the board, Ms. Missy Hall. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Patricia Healy, who will explain the rules and everything for the hearing. Thank you, Ms. Healy.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We have two board members who are not here at this time, but we do expect them to come. I'm sure they got caught up in traffic. The redistricting public hearing citizen comment policy. One, speakers shall identify themselves by providing their names and addresses. Two, each individual may speak only once during the public hearing. Three, comments this evening shall be limited to the matter of the elementary school redistricting. Four, three minutes shall be allotted to each speaker. However, the board chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with approval from the board. There is no predetermined number of minutes, so we will hear from anyone who wants to speak to us this evening. Five, any comment which is profane or abusive, or which threatens imminent fiscal harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. So I'd suggest anybody who plans to speak, if you can line up on both sides, our intention is to start on one side and go to the other in the interest of efficiency until everyone's been heard from. Ms. Decatur is with us, but she's going to be sitting in the front row until she has relief. She has a future student with her. And Mr. McGosker has joined us, thank you. I assume you got caught up in traffic and Ms. Egan is also a long-distance commuter, so I'm sure she'll be here at some point. All right, anyone who wants to speak, please come forward.
I'm forward. May I?
Yes, do you have a card, Mr. Milde?
I have my card.
Oh, you already handed it in, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, my name is Paul Milde, I live at 105 Lakeshore Drive. I'm also the former Acquahia District Board of Supervisors member, and I served in that capacity for three terms, for 12 years. And many years ago, we, a couple of board members with me, Mark Dudenheffer and Cord Sterling, started working on the idea of moving the Annie Moncur. I'm going to speak in favor of the E2-2, if you haven't figured that out. We worked on getting Annie Moncur moved to what we thought was a more suitable location, and we worked with you, and some of you are still here, to that end, and we accomplished great things, and relatively, this is quick work for government work, to be coming this far along, a great new school in a location very close to the current Annie Moncur. And when I found out that there was a plan that would move all of the students to another, from the Acquahia Harbor into another school, I was a little shocked, because we had always presented this as a replacement, a better replacement for the school in a similar location that would serve roughly the same kids. And as a Board of Supervisors member, I'm aware of the irony of me getting involved in redistricting. We don't, we know that's one of the worst things you have to deal with, and we tell you, go deal with it, because that's the cheaper way than having to build more schools and give everyone what they want, because we can't afford that. And that speaks to the issue a little bit of the design capacity versus the other capacity, the lower capacities that we talk about, the optimum capacities. And I know that's one of the things you're considering. And I have no idea how far I am on time. You know, Annie Moncur was your superintendent 50 or 60 years ago. I called Jo Knight before I got here, and she remembers Annie Moncur coming to the school when she was at your board office, and what she looked like, how she walked a little limp, and she was stern, but everyone respected her. But she lived right there at Acquahia Town Center, that was where she lived, and her part of her house now sits next to the church there that she attended. And it was always very fitting, and I'm sure the school board, before our time, had that in mind when they named that school Annie Moncur. So I thought that was an interesting bit of history, so I really think that we owe it to the residents and the kids who are excited about and have been planning on this new school, to kind of try to keep that promise. And I mean us, when I say we, I know that I was involved in this, so that's why I'm here, just to say that's the way we presented it, and that's what I thought we committed to, to the public, and I would like for us to, or you, to keep that in mind when you decide on E1 or E2. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Katie King, and I'm a resident of Embry Mill Phase 1. I'm speaking to you today to express my support of the proposed changes to the current redistricting plan to keep the children of Embry Mill Phase 1 at Winding Creek Elementary School. I don't feel it makes sense to bus the children of Embry Mill Phase 1 to Park Ridge, which is the fifth closest elementary school to us. The adjustments my neighbors are proposing will not only keep the children of this neighborhood at their current school, but will improve Stafford County Elementary School's use of capacity, proximity, continuity, and feeder patterns, and reduce the need for redistricting again in a few years. While Embry Mill may not have been around as long as some of the older, more established neighborhoods, we are just as much a part of this community and deserve the same consideration. There are many Embry Mill residents who grew up here and lived in Stafford County most or all of their lives, just as there are residents who are brand-new to Stafford County residing in older neighborhoods. Almost all families chose their home in part for the schools within their district. Therefore, redistricting should be done in a way that makes sense and benefits the community as a whole, rather than the wishes of neighborhoods to be at a particular school. I strongly encourage you to consider these small adjustments to the current plans. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Dr. Kizner and school board members. I am Kelly O'Connor. I live in Acquahia Harbor. It is nice to see everyone again. Last night, I spoke about an issue near and dear to my heart as both a parent and educator, school culture. This evening, I would like to address a second topic that is also of the utmost importance to me, diversity. Allow me first to contextualize my remarks. I have devoted my career to access and equity for underserved student populations, and I have taught at predominantly non-diverse schools, including Overbrook High School in Philadelphia, with a student body that is 99% minority, and 100% of students qualify for free lunch; and Maynard Evans High School in Orlando, Florida, with a student body that is 98% minority, and 100% of students qualify for free lunch. I truly feel that everyone benefits from schools with diverse student populations. Our children get to grow up with other students who do not look like them, or who do not go home to the same situation as they do. Every one of our children deserves that. My white, middle-class Acquahia Harbor children, as much as the children of immigrants who sit in my classes, or the students of color who are my children's best friends, or the children who come to school every day, because it is where they are guaranteed at least two meals a day. All of those children need to be in the same schools and the same classes. It is how we build a community. These two plans on the table do not create equality of diversity. In Plan E2-1, there is a 30% difference between Hampton Oaks and Moncur students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. Hampton Oaks Elementary School, where my children would go in that plan, would have a 23% percentage of the student population qualified, and Moncur would have 53%. In Plan E2-2, that difference is only 7%. 34% of students at Hampton Oaks Elementary would qualify, and 41% of students at Moncur, the school my child would attend. The discrepancy in racial composition is even greater. In Plan E2-1, again, in Hampton Oaks, where my children would attend, would be 44% minority, and Moncur would be 80%. In Plan E2-2, Hampton Oaks Elementary would be 65% minority, and Moncur, where my children would attend, would be 61%. Only a 4% difference. All Stafford County public school children deserve a school that is truly diverse. Plan E2-2 is what is best for education, for our children, and for our community.
Hi, thank you so much, school board members. My name's Ashley Fint, and I am in Acquahia Harbor. I'm here supporting E2-2. I had to leave my son in tears, who wanted to join me tonight to talk to you about his desire to stay at the new Moncur. Not only have they been told every day they're going to the new Moncur, they've been given tours of the new building, they've been shown videos daily of progress on the new building, and he has helped support financially from his allowance to help raise money for the track and the basketball court at the new school that he believes he is going to. That is a community from a very young age. We are a community that stays together, that we have done so much together to help Stafford build this beautiful new school, that, you know, funds aren't always available, so the community has pulled together to make sure that we are helping provide what's needed for the children. I also want to say that with 2-2, we will have less students that are moved, 600 less students, which, I mean, that's, 600 is 600 students, that you're not uprooting their community, their stability, their, what they're doing every day. Going off the equability, I mean, the difference of a 7% difference between Hampton Oak and Moncur with the E2-2, that's huge versus the 30% that it would be with the E1-1, so we need to keep these schools comparable. Stafford's known to be a diverse community, and we need to keep these schools as a diverse community, and we do that by you choosing E2-2, so thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina Hawkins. I live at 125 Mount Hope Church Road. I have four children in Stafford County Public Schools, one at Brookpoint, one at Stafford Middle, and two at Stafford Elementary School. Just as a quick preface, one of my neighbors also really wanted to be here, but she was unable to. She wanted me to pass on her desire that her child stays at Stafford Elementary. I'm here tonight to petition to have our street, Mount Hope Church Road, which also includes the estates, stay within the boundaries of Stafford Elementary School. According to the new maps, our elementary kids are slated to be moving to Grafton Village Elementary School. We're a small street, right on the cusp of the new proposed boundary. Our neighborhood has been established for a long time, with a few families having been there for decades. We've been there for seven years. A few weeks ago, I went around the neighborhood and handed out flyers that I had created to make everyone aware of the proposed changes. I also surveyed the amount of children currently at Stafford Elementary on our street, and I approximated that there were 10 children from our whole street, that includes my two and eight other children, that are currently attending Stafford Elementary School. One of our biggest concerns with this proposal is the middle school boundary lines. Our kids will still be going to Stafford Middle School after they leave 5th grade, no matter which elementary school they are attending. Yet the students at Grafton feed into Dixon Smith Middle School. The drive to Grafton is down Brook Road, which, as you may know, is windy and narrow. It's also been closed since November 2018 for reconstruction, and it is undetermined when it will be opened. The relationships that children build with other children during elementary school move with them to the next level and are crucial to the transition period and will affect their success at the next level. So moving to Grafton Village for our kids will make these relationships impossible, because they won't be going to the middle school with them. So my first plea is to keep our street, Mount Hope Church Road, at Stafford Elementary School, especially since they'll be going to Stafford Middle when they have graduated from that school. I'd also like to address the grandfather clause. I understand that incoming 5th graders are being allowed to finish out their last year at the current, their current school, with the understanding that, of course, they provide their own transportation. I think that's great. However, this has put me between a rock and a hard place. I have an incoming 5th grader and an incoming 3rd grader. So my request is to allow siblings of the incoming 5th graders to be grandfathered with their older siblings. With your plan over the next five years, the attendance percentages at Stafford Elementary will have the ability to have some flexibility. For example, the school year 2019-2020 has an 88% enrollment, 814 students. That leaves a 12% availability. So adding our 10 children will virtually have no impact on your numbers, but will alleviate great hardship on our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Gally Clatterbuck, and I live in Phase 1 of Embry Mill. I'm here today to ask you to modify the plans that you're currently considering for the elementary school redistricting. In both plans, you have all of Embry Mill moving to Park Ridge, and I don't think that is beneficial. As great as it would be to keep all of Embry Mill together, we are just too large of a community to do so without building a new school. Park Ridge is the fifth closest school to Phase 1 of Embry Mill, and there is no direct path there without crossing into at least one other district. The maps that are being presented show that we are connected by land, but there are no roads there. We would be crossing another school district. That creates an island. Right now, Phase 2 and Autumn Ridge are zoned to go to HH Pool, followed by North Stafford High School. Moving Phase 1 to Park Ridge would leave our kids to go to Colonial Forge without all the friendships they have forged, they have formed through elementary school and middle school, and they would not follow the same feeder patterns. Changes that we have suggested alleviate overcrowding at Winding Creek, as well as Park Ridge Elementary School. I ask that you be open-minded to the changes within your district to make sense for the whole community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Crossican. I live at 200 Anchor Cove in Acquahia Harbor. Two nights ago, during the televised board meeting, Ms. Healy stated that the board is receiving hundreds of emails, all of which are asking to stay in their school. This is truly a testament to our great schools in Stafford County. Everybody wants to stay fit, and I'm hearing that here tonight as well. That's why I'm here as well. My daughter is in 3rd grade at Moncur, and she, we, would like to remain in our neighborhood school. Please know that this is not about a new building. If that building, the new Moncur, didn't exist, I'd still be here tonight. It's not about a building, it's about the community within the building. The teachers, the principals, the students, the parents, the volunteers, the staff, everybody that makes up that community. You have a plan before you that allows many students, of which there's hundreds of emails are coming in to you, asking to stay at their home, homeschool, their neighborhood school. You have an opportunity to keep a lot of kids at their school. And this is Plan E2-2. I ask you to support that plan. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Cox, and I live in Phase 1 of Embry Mill. I have four children in the school district. I hate redistricting. I assume you hate redistricting. I think everybody hates redistricting. It's a big headache. So let's have this year of redistricting be the last for a long time. On both of the currently proposed plans, Garrisonville and Margaret Brent Elementary Schools are looking at starting next year around only 69% of capacity. What are these schools being saved for? No new development is planned for around those schools. Therefore, neighborhoods closest to those schools are eventually going to have to be redistricted in order to fill those schools. Why aren't we doing this now? Let's get it over with. Let our kids and their families settle into a school and take ownership, knowing that they will be a part of that community for more than just a year or two. Ownership, by the way, in a school is good for test scores. By spacing out the existing students into the schools we already have, there will be room at all schools to grow without having to redistrict again in a year or two. Please look at the tweaks to the current plans proposed by the parents in Embry Mill Phase 1. Those tweaks do just that. They space the existing students into the existing schools, leaving room for every school to grow, and it eliminates the need for another redistricting in the near future. Thank you very much.
My name is Brenda Lay. I've been a resident of Stafford County in Acquahia Harbor since 1976. I'm here to talk about the redistricting and especially my support for the E2-2 plan. A community school is vital to each of us. It fosters partnerships between the school and community resources. It engages and develops improved student learning, stronger families, and healthier communities. It engages and develops improved student learning, stronger families, and healthier communities. It connects the children to learning experiences across that community. You have heard the impact statement from hundreds, probably thousands, um, from childcare to commuting. Each community is specific and has its own unique needs. And I would like that to be considered among all of you. My personal statement is that I've been a Moncur parent for many years. Both my stepson, sitting right there, sorry, attended Moncur throughout their elementary education. My little guy right there is in kindergarten with his sign that he wants to stay a Moncur bear. From the time he could talk, he would tell everyone he couldn't wait until he would go to his big brother's school. And he takes so much pride in telling everyone at the school that his big brothers went there too. Teachers, office staff, and principals all know our family, and it made the transition to kindergarten so much easier. The night of orientation, Mr. Mackey knew his first name and even asked about Carl and Wesley, and his face lit up. And I'm sure he'll have some of their same teachers. This is what a community school is all about. Continuity and knowing generations of students and their families. Our PTO is robust and has raised thousands for the new Moncur. As someone stated before, tours have been given and there's an excitement generated. My son asks to drive by that school at least once a week. However, I agree, it's not about the building. It's about that community inside that school. The roots of Moncur is Acquaharbor. The Moncur clothing sale originated at Acquaharbor preschool almost forty years ago. It became so big, the parents moved it to Saint William of York, and then eventually went to Moncur for the auditorium space. Moncur is home to our children and is our community school. And I'm positive that parents in Hampton Oaks feel the same way towards their community school, which actually bears their name, as do all the other parents here with their community schools. The redistricting must be done in such a way that the least amount of students are impacted. Moving less students is the only right decision, and E two-two affects six hundred less students. Less is more. I beg of you to keep Acquaharbor at home at Moncur. Thank you.
Hello again. Um, good evening. I'm here again to stress the importance of my, I feel like I need to lower this. There you go. Uh, to stress the importance of my neighborhood's plan of small changes be put into effect into the two current plans. The current plans have children being shifted to northern schools to relieve capacity at others. So, we have Barrett, Garrisonville Brent, opening up well below capacity. Two of them even dropping capacity over the years, and one only going about one percent each year. Whining Creek and Park Ridge are going to continue to grow, eventually be over capacity again. Most people buying a certain neighborhood for the schools assigned to them. I did, as many of my neighbors have confessed to, and so did Auguste North residents according to their petition. I'd actually like to read one of their statements. Plan, this is back when there's Plan A and B. Uh, Plan A makes no sense. Our house is one point, or quote, one point nine miles from Whining Creek, two point three from Margaret Brent, and three point eight from Garrisonville Elementary. How can it make sense to put little children on a longer bus ride by moving them to a further school from our neighborhood? End quote. I couldn't agree more with this Auguste North resident. So, why should we be asked to move to Park Ridge Elementary, which is as far as four miles away? Neither neighborhood wishes, uh, wishes should be outweigh the others. Auguste North falls right in between Whining Creek and Margaret Brent Elementary Schools. So, I use the golf club's address to compare its distance to both schools, which is actually a little bit closer to the courthouse entrance. The golf club is two point two miles from Whining Creek and two point one miles from Margaret Brent. So, actually a tad closer to Margaret Brent. You cannot argue facts. You must take the emotions and wishes of your constituents out of the equation. No one wants to move, but someone has to. These changes I'm proposing to the current plans are based solely on logics of continuity, proximity, and feeder patterns, and all while balancing out capacity. Do the right thing for all, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Angela Hensley. I live at one eleven Channel Cove, and I'm a twenty-year resident of Acquaharbor. Both my sons went through Moncur, and their brother, who is not my son. You know it's just tough when you're, when you're battling with your ex-husband, that you want the same things for your children. Their son is, is currently a kindergartner at Moncur. Just over two weeks ago, I spoke at a board meeting about the importance of community schools. I spoke of generations of Acquaharbor residents supporting Moncur Elementary, with or without students attending there. I spoke of how my parents attend Moncur events even before they had grandchildren there, and how I continue to volunteer there even my, even though my children have moved on. I spoke of my twenty-five-year high school reunion and how, when deciding to take group photos, I, our diverse eclectic class decided the group they most identified with was with our local community elementary schools. This long-lasting, important tie to community schools should not be discounted. What is important when talking about community support of Moncur is that my family is not unique, and support for community schools is not unique to Moncur. Cohesive neighborhoods support their community schools all over Stafford County. The tradition of Acquaharbor attending Moncur is strong through many years and multi-generations. There are students at Moncur whose parents attended Moncur. The longstanding Moncur clothing sale, which started at the Acquaharbor preschool, is now supported by parents whose own parents started this beloved Moncur tradition thirty-seven years ago. For an event like this, which is not a small endeavor, to continue for so many years is a powerful testimonial of the community support Moncur receives. My boys, sitting here with their brother, stood ten years ago in front of the school board with signs declaring their love and support for Moncur as their community school. My oldest son, then a kindergartner, like his brother is, is now sixteen. My then-four-year-old had a sign that read, "I want to be a Moncur bear." At that time, he was an Acquaharbor preschooler who knew that his brother was at Moncur and that all his friends and neighbors went there. The support by Acquaharbor for Moncur is continual and unwavering, just as other neighborhoods in Stafford County also love and support their community schools. I'm asking the school board to approve a Plan E two-two because it keeps more students in their current community schools and supports educational continuity, as well as continuity of neighborhood support and school traditions. It moves approximately six hundred fewer students than Plan E two-one, and will move even fewer students and keep capacity number viable if Hills of Acquahia is allowed to remain at Hampton Oaks. E two-two is also preferable because Moncur and Hampton Oaks will be more economically equitable, with only a seven percent difference in free and reduced lunch students, rather than Moncur having thirty percent more free and reduced lunch students than Hampton Oak in Plan E two-one. Sometimes, Acquaharbor has received a bad rap because of our passion and our strong public support for our community schools. My question is, why is passion and support for a community school a negative thing? If people countrywide had all the same support and love for their schools as many of us do in Stafford County, we would see an astounding positive change in education. Please support Plan E two-two. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Capina. And I represent Embry Mill Phase One. I understand you had the difficult task of redistricting our county's elementary schools, and there's no way to make everyone happy with your decision. Having attended several of the public meetings on this matter, it's clear you have all put considerable time and effort into organizing the plans before us tonight. However, with all that analysis and input, it is just difficult to see how you arrived at these two options. As a parent, we all have vested interest in what is best for our kids. And while Park Ridge and Whining Creek are both good schools, my daughter does not want to move, and my wife and I stand with our neighbors in rejecting the proposals to move our Whining Creek kids to Park Ridge. Our neighborhood is currently compiling a petition, now nearing two hundred signatures, showing the solidarity of Embry Mill Phase One families who believe the changes you're suggesting are a bad decision and should be reconsidered. Others speaking here tonight have detailed statistical and logistical reasons why keeping our kids in Whining Creek is the best option. I and the others on the forthcoming petition implore you to take these analyses into serious consideration before making your final decision. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Olga Hernandez. I live in Acquaharbor. I thank you for the opportunity to be heard tonight. I have a third and fifth grader currently attending Moncur, and surprise, a new one on the way, so future kindergartner in about five or six years. I'm here tonight to advocate for E two-two. I have been in front of you before, a couple months ago, and even several years ago during other redistricting. So, I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. I'm elated to see the opportunity for Acquaharbor to remain together, but I still want us to remain together at Moncur. Of these two plans, the number of children being impacted is way higher for A two-one. I'm also concerned with the demographics. I fear that you're setting up students to a huge disadvantage and the lack of diversity. This will impact the schools huge and the children. I am a student who learned English in school. I was reduced lunch. And the only reason I had opportunities was because I was submerged in diversity. So, let's not deprive these children of opportunities to see how to get ahead and other opportunities that are around them. My daughters are little Moncur bears. They've gotten their bear paw awards. They served their safety patrols on the student government at Moncur. Principal Mackey the other day took about thirty minutes out of his day to stop and help my eight-year-old find her lost earring. So, yes, we have emotional attachments. Please keep us at Moncur. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm actually here because, um, I'm a Tais from Hills of Acquahia. I'm on Bradbury Way. Uh, none of the plans that are out there have us staying currently at Hampton Oaks. Uh, in the past five years, we, um, have been redistricted twice, and I feel that it would be the best interest for our children to stay at Hampton Oaks because it would be another transition too soon. They just settled, they're happy, they've made friends, and none of the plans have us, you know, staying where we currently are. And I think that would be best for the children to not have to move again, um, to another school so suddenly. So, thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's John Riley. I live at eight nine nine, Lender Lane, um, in, uh, in the Ingleside neighborhood. So, I've sent numbers of emails and phone calls to you all, and appreciate those of you who responded. And, um, understand that this is a very difficult process, and understand that you all have a difficult task ahead of you. Um, and we're not expect, was, we were not expecting to necessarily be happy at the end of this process. Uh, we realize that it, that it's a difficult one. However, the board set out some very specific criteria for how this redistricting process is going to be completed, and hired a consultant to do that work. And the consultant presented a number of plans to the board. Those plans, particularly for South Stafford, don't look anything like what the current plans look like. And the biggest criteria that, that I have concern about is the lack of con, continuity. I didn't go to Stafford schools, so I apologize. Still learning words. Um, but I, you know, that, that's our biggest concern. The Conway District, you know, just does not make any sense, um, as it's currently designed. So, I would, I would ask the board, particularly as it relates to the South Stafford schools, to please reconsider these, the plans as they're currently drawn, and try to make more contiguous districts for those schools. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Small. I live in Embry Mill, uh, Phase One, and I'm here to ask to keep us also at Whining Creek, just as my neighbors have already spoke to. Thank you.
Oh, hi, my name's Kim Lindberg. I don't think I came as prepared as some of these parents. I love the stats, uh, math person, but, um, obviously doing too much work because I thought there was only one map. But, um, can I ask a clarifying question or not? Okay, the answer is no. Well, I live in Brensmill, and it doesn't seem like anybody is here tonight from Brensmill that I could get some advice from, and I don't know who was here last night. But, a lot of people, we're a very military-focused neighborhood. Obviously, we're on the Quantico side, the other side of the highway. I was very excited to see the plan that includes Brensmill, um, I believe along with Acquaharbor over in Moncur. Um, anyways, that's the plan that I'm fighting for. Our son has special needs. Um, a lot of people in our neighborhood have stated that they want to keep the children, um, I'm sorry, our son's three and he hasn't started school yet, so I'm fighting two years ahead, but, um, to keep him at our elementary school, Widewater. But, um, he's already been to Moncur as a two-year-old, and now he's at Garrisonville and, um, the special needs teachers at Moncur. And I'm going to argue the building, I'm going to be that person, um, because it's going to be, the trees and the glass and everything are actually very supportive for him, being autistic. He's severely autistic. Um, he's already riding the school bus as a three-year-old. The bus comes specifically to our neighborhood and picks him up, and he rides around for an hour. So, there's some people in our neighborhood that have argued they don't want to switch schools because you're going five minutes across the highway. I do not understand that as a military brat. We used to travel very far to go to school. Um, I personally want my son to go to the best-ranked school, which is Ben Moncur. It's been online forever. I've only lived in Stafford for six years, but anybody knows this, over Widewater. And frankly, it's just, it's a better principal and a better school system for kids with special needs, and all of the new equipment that's going to support everything he's going to need, being the technology expert he already is as a three-year-old, and, um, the, the library, everything, it's just amazing. So, whoever had the idea to squeeze Brensmill in, thank you, hallelujah. I think it's E two-two, but anyways, you understand my, my thoughts either way.
Hi, I'm Tiffany. I live in Embry Mill Phase One. I moved into Embry Mill before a lot of the construction began. I was one of the first people in there. I'm not originally from Stafford. I'm from Orlando, so I went to a school with probably five, six thousand students in there. So, I've seen a lot of overcrowding and capacity. It took a long time to fix it. And regardless of my personal emotions in regards to moving us to Park Ridge versus Whining Creek, for me, it just boils down to logistics and proximity. I don't want my kid on the bus an hour plus a day. I don't want to have to drive further, pick him up if I need to go do something. It's all about a convenience for everybody, in a sense that we deal with traffic. People work in DC and come back. It, it's just a lot going on, and keeping Phase One at Whining Creek would just be ideal for a lot of us, just based on proximity alone. Actually, all I have to say, I mean, my personal, you know, emotions don't, I don't want to put that into it, but just the proximity is important. That's it, thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber Williams, and I live in Acquaharbor off of Harpoon Drive. First, I want to say thank you to the board and staff that have worked endless hours on this redistricting process. I know that this is incredibly difficult for everyone involved, including faculty, staff, families, and children, all due to the unknown that redistricting brings. I have been to so many of these meetings, town halls, work sessions, and I hate public speaking, but I didn't want to let another opportunity pass without my voice being heard. I don't want my quietness to come off as an indifference, as I personally care very much about where my children go to school, as well as all students in Stafford County. I am extremely thankful for the opportunity for our neighborhood to remain together, as this has been my personal goal all along. However, with the two remaining plans available, and, and the biggest difference for my family is attend a new school to Hampton Oaks versus attending our current school at Moncur. I want to express that I am in full support of Plan E two dash two. Plan E two dash two moves six hundred less students. That is six hundred less students that do not have to go through such a significant change with moving schools and learning a new school culture. This is six hundred less students that continue to see the teachers, faculty, and staff that they have grown to love each year. This is six hundred students that have grown and blossomed at their current school. Six hundred less students that have to go through this change. I understand the importance of redistricting and the need, but I also feel that moving the least amount of students should be a top priority. Of the two redistricting plans presented, there is one clear choice. I ask you to consider Plan E two dash two. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, my name is Sandy Morrison. I live at Acquahia Drive. Um, I do want to say that, you know, I'll talk about a little fact stuff because I'm more of a head person, but I will say that, that hearing a lot of people speaking, it's clear that they love their schools and they love their kids, and we really want what's best for everyone. So, that said, I'm just going to do a little nerding just for a second, talk about the research. As you know, I spoke yesterday about the diversity and the differences between E two-one and E two-two. So, I'm just going to do a little quoting, just a little bit. Years of research on the topic of school diversity reveals three basic benefits for outcomes for all children who attend racially and economically integrated schools, which include short-term learning objectives, such as improved academic performance and higher student aspirations, long-term educational and occupational outcomes, such as college attendance and career attainment, and social outcomes- attendance and career attainment, and social outcomes such as improved racial attitudes and relations and citizenship. I think this is very important, and I hope you consider E two-two. Thank you.
Hi, first name Kristoff. I'm at 1030 Isabella in Acquahia Harbor. I am third generation Stafford. My grandparents were the fourth house in the harbor. I was a Moncur Bear, my mother was a Moncur Bear. I've been in the harbor since birth, and my family helped to develop this community since its development. I'm sorry. I left, went to school, and came back to start a family because I felt like it was an excellent community to build a family in. I walked in to register my now-nine-year-old when he started kindergarten, and Kathy looked at me, the lady at the front desk looked at me, "You're a Moncur Bear." It's like, that to me feels like home. My granddaddy often told this story when we were young about how my grandmother was afraid that nobody was going to move here. Not afraid of that anymore, by the way. He sure won't. But he always said, "Well, they're going to have to let us get to our home, Ruby." I couldn't hear less, much like Karen who spoke earlier. Whether we were in the new building, the old building, or, you know, the trailer things they throw up sometimes when they're redeveloping, it's not about the facility to me as much as it is about the relationships we've already established, the community, the sense of community that we've worked so hard to create. I have three children right now that are slated, well, they were slated to all be Moncur Bears. I've got two in the school right now and one coming up next year, and I just can't imagine them going anywhere else. So for me, that's pretty much the bottom line, the teachers, the family, the sense of community, and I'd appreciate you guys considering keeping them there. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Perry Como. I'm at 404 Auto Drive, Embry Mill Phase One. This is the third meeting I've attended during this session, the second time I've talked in the first day I've spoken with you all as well. It seems, and I just wanted to kind of sit in, all three of them, just to get, you know, a little bit of awareness and see what everyone is, the concerns that they're dealing with. And it seems that a lot of the concerns are pretty much the same, whether they've moved to their location near their school because close proximity or because that closeness, that oneness that we want to develop with our children and make sure they have that with their school as they're growing. But for some reason, when it was solicited out to the contractors, there were several plans that came to fruition. Somehow those several plans narrowed down to two, and those two plans that got brought to the table seemed to have lost that objective from Stafford County, which is that continuity and that proximity. Yes, we know redistricting is hard. Yes, we know it's something that we want to do less of, and if we can do it within, you know, a five-year timeframe, at least we know those students that are currently at their location can move up to their next level. But for some reason, that's not happening. I listened to one young lady yesterday. She said she's been living in her place for five years, memory district, three times, which is crazy to me. I really don't get that. I really don't understand it, but I know those are the hard choices that a lot of people do make and that you have to make on behalf of the school board. My consideration, again, as a lot of people have spoken tonight and last night, is having that common sense approach. We understand that there are times where we have to move, but again, if we're trying to develop our children, why send them further away? If you've got four, three to four schools that's closer to you than that fifth one, why shoot for the fifth one? You know, if they're currently at a school that's closer to them, why move them? You have a lot of parents here, and we know that there are many that have special needs and get special, that can't get special waivers for their kid to remain where they're located. And hopefully, because we know, well, I've heard last night that some schools have tried to deny their waiver that they reconsider, because again, if we're looking out for the student, which again is all of our students, because we're all in Stafford County, we're trying to give back to that county. Another thing that I've also noticed is that a lot of people here have put a lot of effort into doing the research. I know on our end here at Embry Mills, the ladies, they put together a full-blown plan to where there's minimal movement from a lot of people that are currently in their location, and we've submitted it to the board, and I know a lot of you, this is probably the first time you've seen me, but if you need a copy of that plan, I will share it with you. You know, because whether it happens now or later, that's something we have to consider to try to bring our kids to some kind of normalcy. I retired here. I'm a disabled vet. I got my daughters here, and there's a lot of things that made me choose to stay here and to move where we're living at now. But to have that readjustment for them is going to be something difficult and something that we've got to get through. Thank you for your consideration.
The board, please come forward. Oh, come on down. We have two venues.
Hi. My name's Jim Isaias. I live at 1101 Spain Drive in Acquahia Harbor. So when this whole thing first, kind of, we moved here like a year and a half ago. When this whole thing kind of, you know, came across my Facebook feed, I kind of wanted to really jump into it and kind of get swinging, and then all of these people over here just did amazing work. I mean, especially was it Sandy Morrison with her awesome research and everything like that. It's just incredible. And I think, and I think the thing that really impresses me the most about that, and even with the gentleman from Embry Mills was just saying, where, you know, you've got organic talent right here in the district, and, you know, I'm not saying that we can go back in time or anything like that, but the next time we come across a situation like this, I think we should really take advantage of the talent that we have right here and the constituents that you guys serve. I think it's really, really powerful stuff. Now, I'm here, obviously, in support of E two-dash-two. My kids are Moncur Bears. I've got two of them right now. I've got a first grader and I've got a kindergartner. And really, I didn't want to come here tonight because traffic in 95, and I get up at four o'clock in the morning and work up in McLean, but the thing that made me come over here is something that my six-year-old son said to me yesterday, and he said, "You know, Dad, I'm really excited about going to the new school." Like, "I walked past the display case, and there's stuff about the new school, and my teachers have been telling me about the new school, and I'm really excited about my new school." And I really think it's, you know, I'm not giving you the statistical justification for this, but just kind of like the emotional fairness kind of thing. I mean, you've got a plan here that obviously works and meets the criteria. If it didn't, then it shouldn't be one of your options. It moves less kids. It's more fair to the kids who are at Moncur now, and I, sorry if somebody already mentioned this, but talking with some of the PTO members and just the, you know, the amount of support and the amount of funds that they've raised for Moncur, for the new Moncur, and a lot of those parents are in Acquahia Harbor, and to take us out of Acquahia Harbor after doing that, and taking the kids that are in Acquahia Harbor out of Moncur, you know, after basically promising them that they're going to be moving to this exciting new experience, I just don't think that would be, I just don't think that would be fair. So, go E two-dash-two.
All right, so I'm going to lower this. So I don't have anything prepared. All I want to say is I come from, not a conehead. Okay, so, I come from Europe, and in Europe, we are not as involved as you guys are in the districting and the, just the life in the school. And I'm really grateful that I married this American and then I came to the United States, and then, and then my daughter gets this school in Acquahia Harbor. I'm a resident of Acquahia Harbor. We started in 4K and then Moncur kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and then I'm saying, you know, I'm, I'm going to go to a meeting. Why? Because I want you to stay where you are. Oh, because why am I not staying at Moncur? Because it's really complicated. I, I don't want to explain to a seven-year-old, first of all, I don't have, nobody got time for that. But you have to understand that coming from Europe, this is like, I can't even believe, like, these, everybody, Embry Mills is like, no, we want, we want our community, Acquahia Harbor, we want our community. Everybody wants to stay where they are. I know it's not possible. I know, like, it's, it's insane, but let's, let's try to work together, and I'm really, really, really glad that from the first meeting I went to with a consultant with data that was outdated, wrong, plain, just wrong data, now we're working together. So let's keep this going, and I know it's, it's probably not going to be a magical solution, but we're all here. You're here, and we're all trying to make things better for our kids, and I'm just like, I'm amazed that, that we are working towards the same goal, and I thank you for your time, and I thank you.
I did prepare. My name is Kia Zorich. I prepared a little bit for this. I'm a local hairstylist, and I've been here in Stafford since 1996. I moved here when 610 was still just a two-lane road, and all we had was Walmart to shop at. I grew up in Acquahia Harbor. I grew up in the second section. Back then, the second and the third section of Acquahia Harbor went to Wide Water Elementary, while the first section went to Moncur. The one thing that I felt was kind of weird was that they split up an entire neighborhood to two different elementary schools. I got to middle school, and I met friends that have known each other forever because they had all went to the preschool together in Acquahia Harbor, which my daughter also attended for two years. Moncur has always been a big part of the Acquahia Harbor community. The Acquahia Harbor preschool has already established a relationship with Moncur. So when these kids go to the Acquahia Harbor preschool, they kind of expect to go to Moncur Elementary. It's right there. It's what they expect. These kids that I grew up with, they had relationships before, with each other before I met them in sixth grade because they played sports together, they swam together, they swam in Acquahia Harbor together, but they were split up in elementary school and they got back together in middle school. How are you going to split up an entire neighborhood into two different schools? We want to keep our community together and not divide them, so why do we keep splitting up Acquahia Harbor? Kids only, only to bring them back together and then split them up again when they go to middle school and high school. In the harbor, for generations, they have relationships with Moncur that go, go back over a half a century. The relationships that they have have been built between the school staff, the kids, families as a whole, not const, to not const, they should not constantly be jeopardized because our county grew at an alarming rate, and our county as a whole worried more about the money coming in from the families moving here, more than the families and relationships that were already here and established. The learning curves and anxiety that can be caused to the youngest kids in our, in our county, having to constantly change schools is not right. I see military families get stationed at Quantico, they move to Acquahia Harbor, they buy a house, have young children that go to Moncur. After three years, they get stationed elsewhere, for three years, only to get stationed back at Quantico. They want to move back to Acquahia Harbor because they know what they are getting. They know what school their kids go, their kids are going to go to. They like, they like the rest of us, want to have the same consistency and stability for their families. For those who grew up with the same people with their, their whole childhood know how special the bond can be. These bonds help make lifelong relationships. We all know how rare that can be. Our kids deserve the same, the same chance to experience these relationships with their community the same way we did. These are relationships that help our community together. Kids need stability in their lives, especially in their learning environment. Having stable, dependable relationship ties with our community's schools and neighborhoods will create a happier atmosphere. Can I keep going? With our children, which will, huh?
We're limiting everyone equally to the three minutes. I'm sorry.
Well, then there's that.
But if you want to send something in, feel free to send an email, and it will be shared with all of us. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the board?
I lost my paper. Okay. Amaya.
You can fill it out when you finish, but we do have to have those for the record. Thank you.
Okay. I've heard what everyone else has said, and I'm sure you know I support E two-two, and I just didn't want to sit here without getting up and letting you know. I think there's a lot of reasons, I think there's a lot of, a lot of reasons why that should be what you guys go for and not, one, the racial disparities, the economic disparities for the two schools that are close together. Communities being moved five times in three years really sucks. That's just, that's, I don't know, that's just horrible. And then impacting six to 700 less students, that's a really big deal to me as well. So that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and our next time together for the board will be at the, well, actually, will be Tuesday. We're going to be having a budget presentation of the Board of Supervisors. You're all invited to come too. That'll be at 4:30 Tuesday afternoon to 5:00, and then we're going to have a work session with the supervisors after that, but I'm sure you're more interested in the next redistricting meeting, and that will be a work session next Thursday, as Mr. Townsend noted in his timeline, at the Professional Development Center at 6:00, right? Yes, he's nodding his head. Yes, thank you. All right. Thank you. Oh. The, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity for a public service announcement. That's going to be at the County Government Center where the supervisors meet, and we, we're going to go at 4:30, and we have a half hour scheduled to make the budget presentation on the budget that the school board has approved, and we'll be asking for funding from the Board of Supervisors. We'd love to see you there. Bring your friends. Thank you.